Three fifteen. Two thirty something like.
Two thirty.
If everyone's ready, we can go ahead and start.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The first meeting of the finance committee. So if you would like to call the roll.
Good afternoon, Pat Bradford.
I am here.
Hugh McManus.
I am here.
Stephanie Walker.
Here.
Next, we have a prayer by Chaplain Brenda Schwartz, Warrior Family Ministries.
The steward the finances over our children's education. We, good afternoon, I'm Chaplain Brenda Schwartz with Warrior Family Ministries located here in Wilmington. Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, we are gathered together this afternoon as chosen people to steward the finances over our children's education. We ask that you provide this committee with the wisdom and the knowledge to make right decisions as they discuss budget needs and any other decision pertaining to funds. Continue to watch over, protect, and bless our schools, staff, teachers, and these committee members as they continue to be servant leaders within our community. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. We want to stand and, so we pray. And I didn't ask anyone to lead, so let's just do it together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, we have the agenda in front of us. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
May I just ask, is, are we supposed to be taking notes at this meeting? I'm not asking.
That's a very good question.
Um, I mean, it's recorded, so I guess we could go back and do the notes later, if need be.
I do not know the answer to that.
Okay.
Ashley doesn't know? Doctor Faust, you know? Are we supposed to take notes for this?
I've got it until Kristen gets here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Um, the first thing that we're going to do is it's been in the news about reverse osmosis filtration expenses, so Ashley's going to address that for us, just very quickly.
Yes, so I just wanted to share with everyone that those filtration systems were put in place in twenty twenty-one fiscal year. And when those were put in place, um, we shared with the schools that those would come out once the new, um, Sydney Sweetwater Treatment Plant was in place. They were putting in a new filtration system themselves at that treatment plant. And so this year, once that treatment plant was up and running, um, the service related to the filtration system stopped because now we're able to use the water fountain, the water that's in the building without going through that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Hopefully that'll put that question to rest. Next, we're going to start with a broad overview of the budget. And you should have that handout. And it's back to Ashley.
So we'll start with the budget review.
Thank you.
This document is familiar, I'm sure. We went over this the first time at our budget, um, our board retreat, where we went through the different funding sources. And then, and so that's at the top of the page, that gives you your four hundred and twenty-two million. And the next chart below shows all the different funding sources, um, but broken out by the object, so salary benefits, purchases, service, um, supplies, materials, equipment, and also payments to charter schools. So it's, um, the same information for all the funding, just broken out a different way, so you could see it at the object level. And then at the bottom, this is a new chart. Um, I don't believe we covered this at the, um, board retreat, but this shows our information just for our local current expense funding. And here you can see, broken out by object level, just as we talked about in the chart above. Our salaries and benefits, as you see in this chart, make up about seventy-three percent or seventy percent of the budget, where the chart in the middle makes up about seventy-three percent with salaries and benefits. On that bottom chart, if you take away the salaries and benefits and the charter school payments, which were required by law to make those payments based on their enrollment, that leaves us about twenty-five million or twenty-five percent of that local budget.
Any questions, you guys? Ashley, just for fun, by object description, you mean by the, the, the item, right?
Yes.
It's not some code for something I don't understand?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Just sorted, the budget sorted a different way.
So my, my takeaway there is how much we spend in salaries and benefits. Seventy, um, you know, seventy?
Seventy percent.
Two, seventy-three percent?
From local.
Right.
So there's more from state and federal, but just for local.
Right.
All right.
That's pretty standard.
I'm sorry, Ms. Bradford.
Go ahead, that's pretty standard, right? I feel like I look at the states, like, that's the most that everybody spends, just budgets and benef- or salaries and benefits.
Right, when you look at, uh, um, school budgets as a whole, all the different funding sources, normally schools fall around seventy to eighty percent of their budget salaries, depending on the district.
That's good to know.
And the next document, if we're ready to move to the next document, in that same section, we've been sharing with the board that we're looking by division at reductions of ten percent. And so this is to give you an idea, so it, it, we're not sharing the details in this document, but just to give you an idea of what the ten percent.
Sorry, ten percent from our divisions.
Divisions, that's correct.
Not from schools, this is from the divisions. So the divisions at the district level, those are where we're talking about the ten percent cut.
And so you can see for the total budget coming from central office divisions, you see is the nine point approximately fi- nine point five million. And so on the previous page, we were looking at twenty-five million was not salaries, benefits, or charter schools. So of the twenty-five million we were referring to earlier, um, the divisions budgets make up about nine point five million.
So I have a question. And I can see that the program has a certain number, but first two are operations, transportation, operations, maintenance, operations, operations, operations facility. So explain how that's all done.
Sure, so if you look at our organizational chart, um, senior staff, we have divisions, we're over divisions. And then under the divisions, we have different departments. And so, um, under the operations divisions, you're going to have, um, maintenance operations, your child nutrition, transportation, uh, facility planning. So those fall, those are examples of departments that fall under a division.
And that chart is found on the website, is it not?
It is.
Okay.
It's under, I believe if you go to superintendent on the website, the order chart is located there.
Okay.
She's bringing that up for you, just in case.
Questions, you guys?
Question?
Yes.
So, I'll be ready, everybody, anybody. So the ten percent rationale for that is the increase in salary and contributions?
So good, yeah.
The ten percent that we're looking at to cut, that's based upon predominantly the salary increase from the state?
No, it is based on, um, the, the decrease in student enrollment. That's the overarching. And then we look at our budget at the district level, um, in the divisions and say, okay, let's start to see where we can start trimming. Remember last year during our budget, we were talking about with those ESR funds, we had X amount of positions that we needed to. So that, remember I was saying each year you'll see those, so you're starting this, you'll see those this year.
So where I was going was, so this is less county input financially. We have not heard, county has not, that's not part of this, this moment.
So what we do first is we, um, have conversations with the, the county, we meet with them. They fund us at thirty-four, thirty-four per student. And we had spoken with them about, um, sharing the, if we have twenty-five thousand six hundred, so that we, um, are calculating the same number. And it's not a, um, oh gosh, I'm trying to think of, the, the, um, we're creating our budget so that we know exactly. And so that's the communication that we have, is that they will, um, fund us on the.
Original.
Mm-hmm, from the twenty-day headcount, yeah.
Remember that discussion at breakfast that day? What, it had? Two meetings and they admitted that, that the school district is, is correct. And, um, in the, I texted Dr., or emailed Dr. Faust. It, the county manager said that they're going to make that up from this last year, which was just really exciting.
Yeah, right.
Dr. Faust, would you talk to us for just a second of where we are, why, why we're doing this ten percent? And, you know, what our goal is and so on?
So the goal is to, of course, when I say right size, when we had twenty-six thousand plus students, you have staff that support that, you, not only just staff, but you have products that actually support that. When the enrollment comes down, and the reason why we have to talk about enrollment, all of our funding comes from how many students we have. Revenue, that's where we generate the revenue. If we lose twenty-five students, the revenue comes down. We've lost, um, from post or pre pandemic, we aren't where we were, um, three, five years ago. So now we have to right size, meaning that when we had twenty-six thousand, we were able to fund and do the projects that we needed for twenty-six thousand. We don't longer have twenty-six thousand. So we, as our budget, in order to balance it successfully, we have to bring it, match it with our input output. So twenty-five thousand, eighty-three kids, we have to have the funds to support that. And, um, that means looking at this divisions, looking at what we, our operating cost is, and basically that's what we're talking about, our operating local costs, make sure, the state always does that for us. The federal always does that for us. Our local gives us the money based on the students. We then in turn have to create the formula that matches that. So we can't live outside, too far outside of the, um, the, the, the formula. Because then you're living above your means.
So this ten percent plan, does that fix everything?
No. I don't, you know, what would this fix everything is, you know, we get, um, you know, twenty-six thousand kids. So we have twenty-five, so when we look at it, so you'll see out of all twenty-six, but our, um, pre-K, they're not into the formula. So that's why you don't see, so at some point, I guess it would have been like twenty-seven thousand or however many more pre-Ks. So we have a thousand pre-Ks, we just don't get the funding, um, at the, the level like what for Fed. There's some, it's hard to explain how that formula works, but they're not accounted for in that, um, bottom line.
I have a follow-up question. So where does that number come from? I know when, well, I felt like last time the local was looking at a different number than what, that what we had. And I looked on the DPI website, for twenty-one, twenty-two, they're counting us as twenty-four thousand six hundred and two. And I don't know if that counts charters as well.
It does not.
No, it doesn't, okay. But you, but doesn't the county, do they go on different numbers? I guess that's what I'm asking.
So, um, what they were looking at is the end of the year. So they would do pre-planning numbers based on the end of the year. So now we're like, we want to do the pre-planning numbers for what we have. And then if we don't get that, then we settle up with, with the numbers upfront.
Do we know what, what are, well, we're not going to know to the end of the year what our numbers are for the county.
So yes, so we, we will have our pre-planning numbers. So the state sends them and we actually have our pre-planning numbers out. We are in, um, conversations with principals, that's how we do our hiring early and making sure that, um, the, the projected number is where it needs to be. So we're around about, was it twenty-five, um?
Two, six.
About twenty-five, two.
Two, twenty-five, two, is, um, twenty-five thousand two hundred, um, is where we are right now. And that's what we do our, um, projected budget on.
But, but, if I may.
Go ahead.
The loss of student numbers, what created the monster is people moving in the building, where they're building, schools are busting into seams.
Or they don't have kids with them.
Right. But north and south, toward Hampstead, exploding as we speak.
Okay, do we want to move on to the next set? I asked Ms. Sutton if she would look at, I asked for all the expenses that were half a million dollars and up, thinking there would be, you know, twenty, thirty of them. And it turned out that she's given us everything from a hundred thousand dollars and up. And that's what we're going to look at next, if I'm following, yep, if I'm following. And that's going to be your sideways chart.
And I, I think it's important to note, um, when we were looking at our, our first sheet, I, I talked about the twenty-five million. And when you look at this document in front of us now, that shows the detail of for, you know, all the expenses of a hundred thousand and more of those line items, that equals twenty point three million. So we're looking at, you know, eighty percent of that twenty-five million that we talked about previously. So you can see the information there. And we have senior staff here and we're glad to answer any questions you have, um, related to these lines.
Are, are we, are we looking to cut expenses off of these sheets? Or is this just informative purposes or?
So what, what you'll find, whenever we have our board work session and we talk about in more detail the ten percent reduction by division, you'll see some of these lines come up as part of the ten percent reduction, where they've looked at contracts, um, renegotiated, or, um, identified things that weren't working well and gone through a process to determine what they could reduce. And so you will see some of these line items again. But I wanted you to have information, and you had asked to look at it for three, the past two years, including this year. So I have that information for you as well.
That's really helpful. Um, do you want to go through it line by line, or do you want us to just ask questions?
Well, I'll, I'll give you a moment to ask, to review and see if you have questions about any of the lines.
Have you guys, have you guys looked at it?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I mean, and this is, the utilities, it looks like. Is that, uh, due to not only rate increases, but another school opening, but I don't know, the first, over the three years?
It went up a million dollars.
Yes.
Over three years.
Yeah, our utility increases have really gone up. Every year that rate increases and that's what you're seeing there, are rate increases.
Because the, uh, one of the media had yesterday or today that, um, Duke is asking for an eighteen, almost a nineteen percent increase over three years. And if it's gone up a million dollars in three years, oh my goodness.
Right.
Can I ask, the, the first year, were we still in the COVID year or a COVID year?
Yes.
Maybe that's why it was lower as well.
Oh, maybe. Good idea.
And that, that does play a part of it, but I will say each year we've had significant increases in utilities, the rate increases.
And you know, I want to know about landscaping. How much are we spending on landscaping?
Eddie is out sick today, but I did, um, get a message from Chris Walker, let me see if I can find that.
Well, I know they added back four, over four hundred thousand last year for landscaping to the district. But I also know the county does do a lot, the parks and gardens. Since I sit on that committee, I've learned a lot, how much they do for our district as far as the fields and the tennis courts. They've just repaired Hoggard's tennis courts and I think they've got to do more. I don't know what the, the full breakdown is in what the county does for the district as far as the Parks and Gardens Committee in relation to our sports arenas.
The athletic fields contract is four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, that was added back in, right, actually?
Right, yeah, that came back into our budget this, this fiscal year.
Did they say why the county gave that back? Did they give a reason?
I don't, I don't remember. I don't recall the reason, and if Eddie was here, he would probably know that, I, I don't recall.
Part of the lights though was coming into Title IX with the softball fields, the old softball fields versus the baseball lighting in particular and field houses.
And I know Eddie's not here, so I'm not going to put it on you.
I do have some, I did get a text message, so if you have questions, if I have the answer, I will share.
I'm looking at the rentals and leases, and I think that was, didn't he have a lot of equipment failure with HVAC in that?
Yes, he did.
And I know that's why it went up a lot.
Yep, I don't have the details for that, but that is true.
Cause we had some failing systems.
Right, so we had some AC units that needed to be repaired. And so in between time, we had to rent chillers to, until we could get those.
Kids would get hot.
Yes, so we could those fix, so that is part of it. And so that's where you'll see some of those, those jumps. Where, um, we heat and cool a lot of square footage.
Yeah, yeah, and it gets really hot. I mean, I imagine it, it really works, it works the systems pretty hard.
Dr. Barnes, I'm curious, under human resources, background checks, drug testing, how many of those do we do a year?
So I checked, so the fingerprinting has been happening for about a year. And last month, like counted, we had done seven hundred and eight. That alone equates to, hang on, it's on my calculator, about thirty-seven grand, thirty-seven thousand dollars. The other increase in cost in this is we used to use a state system called Teacher Match. And DPI said, we really feel like it would be better served if this local districts had their own flexibility over that and cost of that. So they shut down the state system and sent it to us. And then we had to pick up a recruiting and hiring system, which we call AppleTrack. So that's some of the increases. The other challenge with that line item is most of those things are you, are paid as they're used. It includes things like our employee assistance program, our drug testing, our fingerprinting. So we're ballparking how much that's going to cost every year because it's, it's based on the usage, if that makes sense.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
I have a next question.
Go ahead.
Um, the Legion Stadium fees, it doesn't show a cost for twenty twenty-one, was that because of COVID? Or is it, they just added, Wil- the city of Wilmington added those fees?
I think we just started, it, once again, if Eddie was here, he could help me. But I think that it's like, if I remember correctly, we just started paying the Legion Stadium fees. So that's the reason you don't have it in twenty twenty-one.
It's a pretty good jump from last year to this year.
Is it because Hanover uses Legion Stadium for their sporting events?
Correct.
And I think the graduations did the last, I guess, two years. We, I've not, I haven't won Legion Stadium, I've, we've not had a meeting yet. So I would probably be able to ask questions of them if I, if I had.
I believe there were some repairs and things that needed to be done. And so that committee, um, increased the rates to be able to cover that work that needed to happen over there.
So what can we expect to see here? Reductions in some, just because the staff will, um.
Right.
Look at contracts and, and reduce things?
Right.
So, and we'll see that, not in the workshop next Monday, but maybe. Oh, really?
That, that is the plan.
Okay, awesome. My goal was if we broke salaries and benefits out and didn't deal with them today and focused on everything else, then we're, I know we're going to dig into salaries and benefits and probably get stuck there. So I figured we'd do that next Monday and we'll have this part, at least whatever obvious questions we have, out of the way. Any, any more questions on this, Hugh? You're looking like it.
I was looking at the cost of shredding.
Oh, yeah, what a great business.
Did you say the cost of what?
It's reading. Two million four hundred dollars, rounding.
Yeah, kind of makes you want to get a truck and start working.
So I say there's probably not a lot we can do about the liability insurance, and that is obviously because of.
Right.
That's. Do we, do we get, um, do we put requests out for different rates or they just, it are what they are? And there's only so many companies that will do liability.
Right, so we do every year put that out to see if we could get a company that would provide better rates for us. And who's?
And this, this twenty twenty-three column, this is projected, because we're not quite there yet.
This is the budget as of when I ran the report. So it's budget, not expenses.
So we don't know how we're doing on that, or do we?
Well, we do, but it's not on this spreadsheet.
Okay. Are we doing okay?
Yeah.
All right, good.
Will we get that overview next week, the budget versus actual or whatever?
Um, okay.
Yeah.
Trying to make more work for you.
So which one, so?
Just to see how we're doing with our budget.
Okay, so I just want to make sure, because we'll have two, we'll have the projected one and you want actuals.
Right.
We can give you actuals, yeah.
Yeah. That would be great. Yeah, this is kind of like the pre-session, so we figure out what all our questions are, ever how, where we want to dig into. I guess, I mean, you guys were the, were two of the seven who created this committee. So we didn't have a lot of direction, so we just kind of guessed as to what we're going to do. But I think it's going to turn out to be fine.
Yeah, I've got one last question.
Go ahead.
And it pertains to, to our tech, our one-to-one, um, I know the costs have been rising because there are added costs with the technology, it's replacement costs and also paying for tech, uh, staff to be able to, I, I don't know, I, I, I'm just wondering in the future how we're going to be able to cover expenses as, as, as our funding is going.
We are looking at grants and I have the opportunity that's out there.
Grants, I like the sound of that.
Would that be for, done for replacement equipment?
For the, yes, so like, when, you know, the next cycle. So we, we've got the money for this year to do the middle schools. Our elementary schools, because we took the devices from the high schools and we'll take the devices from the middle schools that they have now, that still have some life, push those down to elementary. So our elementary schools are, are sitting really good right now. Of course, some of their stuff, you know, won't last as long, but it's that they're sitting really good right now. So we're good for middle school, then we're going to start looking for some grant funds or opportunities in order to, to do the new cycle.
Good. Last year when you talked, y'all talked about that and I was thinking, you know, it seems like the minute you drive one of these off the lot, it, it's just worthless in the eyes of the technicians, you know? This baby's just, it's an antique and I'm holding on to it because it, it does me well. But with kids, I can't imagine the equipment's going to hold up like we had expected. More questions?
Well, the, the rationale behind going with the one-on-one is textbooks are outdated. And they're so expensive and technology is the most current.
Correct, so all the data is current. And then testing is completely outlying.
Important that we maintain that.
I mean, that's ideal for.
It opens the world to everybody regardless of where you are, who you are.
We just got to make sure we get it funded. And I like that, I mean, I, I don't know what grants are out there, but I'm sure there have got to be grants out there for.
And where, the, the textbook expense went away, I'm assuming, right?
So we.
The textbook expense.
We still have curriculum and we use textbook money to help with curriculum expenses.
Okay.
But also consumables, workbooks and things like that, that are all connected together to an overarching curriculum.
Thank you.
And we get that, that's in our state budget, um, our textbook dollars.
And on the, like the copier leases, you know, that's, it's actually less than it was, but not by much. I know it's a necessary evil, I'm still leasing, I've owned, went back to leasing. I don't know that we have a whole lot of choice. And in the schools, they're still using telephones, regular old, you know, desk telephones, right?
Yes, but we have voice-over IP now, so it's not. Yes, but we have voice-over IP now, so it's not, not the traditional old stuff, but yes, there's a phone in every single classroom and every office.
Yeah, I don't know many people that have regular phones anymore. It's either voice over internet or our cell phones, so.
Are we good? All right, next thing is low-performing schools?
I wanted to provide a list for you guys of the low-performing schools, just in case you were not aware of that list. We do not, the question was asked, and so I wanted to provide some clarification. We do not provide funding to these schools, local funding to these schools, because they're low-performing schools. So they may get other types of funding, so they might get federal funding, but we don't have an allocation for them, if that makes sense.
No, it doesn't.
Because they're low-performing schools.
Cause they get tired of one funds. If you go on the DPI website, you can read all of that, that's on the report card website, you can go to each school and see how the funding breaks down.
Yeah, depending on the student population at the schools, they get different state or federal funding based on the population.
And it's important to know that we do have some schools that are, that receive Title I that are not low performing. Cause you remember, Title I is based on your after, your free and reduced lunch.
Yeah.
But Mrs. Walker is definitely correct, most of them are Title I, but you do have one up here who is not Title I. So, just FYI.
So we don't provide any local funding for these?
Twelve.
Or twelve?
Additional.
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 So they have a, they have an additional budget, where we're talking about the federal funds, and then their state. There are positions that are paid for out of local funds, but I don't know how we would be able to earmark X amount of dollars that would. So, for instance, like, some of the smaller schools, the two small schools got CSI money. It was like two hundred thousand dollars, about two hundred and fifty, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. It was a formula that they did to give them that. If we were to do any, using that formula, some of these schools could reach up to like four hundred thousand dollars, that'd be through local funds. The, the premise is state gives you money, then if you are, if you're free and reduced, there's also then you're packed on pack with Title I dollars. And the state then, or the goal is that you should be able to provide above and beyond resources that you're not getting from your other local and state budget. That's where your federal dollars, but to, I don't know where, in some schools could possibly apply for grants, but to say that you're gonna give, I don't know, you know, an additional seven million dollars to them, I don't know where you'd get that. I made that number up out of the top of my head.
Usually you have a point of reference, like, I mean, Forest Hill, they received last year about five hundred thousand Title I dollars plus about three hundred and, or close to four hundred CSI dollars. So, you know, of course, that's because they're CSI, so a typical school that is not, let's say Snipes, Snipes is not CSI. They received about four hundred thousand dollars, Title I dollars.
So that's above and beyond what your state and local budget, so they're getting funded, they get a lot of funds.
Well, this, this one page lists all schools.
Yeah, Larry's Title I.
Yeah, that's next, we're getting that next.
Yeah, Larry's Title I, so they're all receiving, yeah.
So, are you ready to move on to per pupil?
Sure.
I think it's gonna generate the most interest.
This is actually information that DPI provides to us as well, they publish this, and so we provided this last year and thought it would be helpful maybe to provide it again this year. This shows our per pupil by each school and different funding source for your information. Also has their final average daily membership, so that was as of the fin, final information that was submitted through Power School at the end of last year, so we're always a year behind on getting this information from DPI.
So my, my, my ask for next meeting would be to take this and bring it out one more, and multiply the final ADM by the per pupil, so we can see what each one's getting based on the ADM.
So the problem with that is that this state and federal is per, per student, so meaning we couldn't do an average just divided by that, because some students are more expensive than others. So if you are, let's say, a special needs student, and you have a nurse, you have a one-on-one, and you fall into a category, and you could also be AIG. They're funding formulas that contribute to that, so what the state is saying is, at this particular school, based on that formula, this is how much money they're giving the feds based on that particular student. Those students may not be at, let's say, at J.C. Rowe anymore, they could now be at another school. So that funding is literally per pupil, and I don't know how to find the formula because there's a dollar percentage of how much you get, we call it, so your most expensive student could be fifteen thousand dollars, and then a student that doesn't have the others could be, you know, twenty-five hundred dollars. It's, I mean, you can divide it out, but it's not gonna give you the actuals, it'll just give you the average of the, the sum of the total.
Right, that confused me more than where I was. If you look at the last, three forty-two, John T. Hager, go all the way over, the total is ten thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and eleven cents. Am I correct in assuming that it's, they're funded between state, federal and local, ten thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and eleven cents per student for twenty-one, two thousand, one hundred and twenty-five students at Hager?
So what I can tell. Hmm, they took the, that's the average. So what happens is, in Hager, that's a big school, so their special needs population will be bigger than some of our smaller elementary schools.
Okay.
Which could actually, they, they could have like anywhere from like four hundred kids who are special needs in that school. An elementary school, you know, if you look at the four hundred, that will be, so then you get all of that state funding, or federal, federal could be federal and state from the special needs. And then, cause they have about two thousand kids, or five hundred, that eats up the sum that goes out to everyone else, only because when you're doing the math, you're equating it to how many students they have. But they could have a special needs kid or a student, I shouldn't say special needs, they should have a student that is a fifteen thousand dollar student. But because of how this is written, it allows us to see, if you look at that, the twenty-one, twenty-six, the amount of kids, then when you look at how much they're getting total, once you divide it, that's where it comes up, with the state is giving you this amount. They don't give us the formula to say that yours, well, I guess, I don't know, I've not seen it that way. This group, this subgroup gets X amount of dollars, this subgroup gets this amount of dollars, and the reason why is because some kids can meet in every one of those subgroups, so it could be AIG, they get funding from that, they get special needs funding, there could be free and reduced funding in there, there could be just your, your general local funding that's in there. So they're coming from different funding pots, and I was talking with Ash, I don't know how to separate that out to give you. Other, I mean, other than, this is what, when we look at, we wanted you all to see and everyone to see that, yes, when individuals are saying that they're not getting funding, they are actually getting funded, and we wanted to see, show you how they are funding. What we are most concerned about is that, that local dollar, that's how we, we look at, that's the one that we can break apart. Federal is, I don't know how to break that one, because they're, they're formula, and we don't have all of the, the algorithm for the formula. State, I don't have all the algorithms for the, for the formula.
Well, then, address the disparity between the last one on the list and the first one on the list, because you're looking at sixty-five thousand dollars at J.C. Rowe, and I know parents talk about this all the time. It's only ten thousand, five hundred dollars at, at, you know, at Hager, sixty-five thousand dollars at J.C. Rowe. So talk about that so that we can begin to understand.
Sure, so, so per pupil on here, but if you, if I were to pull apart and say, let's look at the school budget, Hager's gonna have a much larger budget than J.C. Rowe. J.C. Rowe, the reason why it looks that way, when they took this dollar number, or this, this snapshot, this is one moment in time, there were thirty-three kids there, but because it's an alternative school, we have to keep that school funded at X amount of kids, cause we never know how many kids are gonna be over at J.C. Rowe at any given time, and you can't say, okay, they only need, if there are thirty-three kids, hmm, typically, we may need maybe two, three teachers. But they have middle and high school, so they've gotta be certified in middle school math, middle school ELA, middle school, so their predictors that we, not predictors, but their, their certifications that they have to have if they're working in secondary. So that's where that comes from. So, yes, that is going to be, I look at it as a program that we have that funds. If you look also at Lake Forest, Lake Forest has day treatment, so day treatment is expensive, but it's also given, they're federally funded, so you look at your federal budget, and if a student has an IEP, then we, they're funded through those federal dollars. And so whatever the IEP, that's when we do, we talk about headcount. So we have to make sure that our IEPs are compliant, and we're really big on making sure our IEPs are compliant because we're funded through however many students are, have a compliant IEP, and so that's where those two, so if you, and then mostly, of course, is another one, that's a unique school where it has multiple schools within a school.
Yep.
And so you've got your TPEI, you have your pre-K, you have, oh, it's a satellite school.
Yeah.
And, and I'm sure, I think there's one other, they're the programs, so they have multiple programs there. So that's what that looks like. But just to say, when we pull it out, we want people to understand how we fund, and that we do fund those schools at a higher rate, and this literally shows the dollar amount that the students are, the schools are getting per pupil, and what they've done is the state gives their allocation, and when they look at it, when you divide it by the twenty-one at the state level, however much that state dollar is, it's five thousand, four hundred, seventy-two dollars per student that's given at the state. I think I explained that.
Yes, it's a snapshot.
I'm looking at Ashley.
So I say, it's a snapshot, and each child is, like, my kid had a five-oh-four IEP, that, my student got a little bit more money. My daughter is AIG, she got a little bit more money. So I think it's just a snapshot in time. J.C. Rowe, like I say, the special programs, they're gonna be less students, and it's not gonna be, depending on what students there in that building, cause you have to have the building with the teachers and a minimum amount of instruction and specialists, so that's why that's higher. And also, no, the state gave a lot more as well, so.
You know, that's my favorite question, I've asked it before, so, and I understand you're, you did a great job of explaining it.
Yes.
However, you're talking about students who have misbehaved in school, and they're being placed in an alternative setting, am I correct?
So for J.C. Rowe, perhaps?
Are those kids allowed to participate in school activities while they're at J.C. Rowe?
So when you say, can they play on the sports team, no, they can't go back.
So they can't, okay, okay, well, anything, club activities, okay, it's still, what's the enrollment, is this current, thirty-three?
No, that was last year.
Last I checked, they had sixty-two kids last week.
Do you know what it is right now?
We just said sixty-two.
Sixty-two?
In the last couple of weeks, I checked, they had sixty-two.
So that would go up.
Well, it goes up and it goes down, but we still have to have the same services.
I, I, I give the parameters, I have a problem with the expense of maintaining parameters, that kind of money. I just feel like we could be more creative, and I don't have the answer to that, but it's a fair question, I believe. That's a tremendous amount of expense, that does include building maintenance, et cetera, transportation, separate. I just, I go back, and Ms. Bradford, I will agree with her, I feel like the top-end kids are not getting the same attention and focus as the kids who are not rising to their expectations, the best way I can say it.
But when you look at this.
Not that they should be forgotten or left out, not at all, but there's a great disparity, and I'll end with that, that financially, on paper or not, it's, it's just a great disparity, and now we're at least asking for cuts.
So I think we may be confused.
Am I deep?
Yeah, yeah, so we don't give them sixty-five thousand dollars per student. What we're saying is, by state, this could be the teacher who is on a, on the state budget, or the teacher who's on the federal budget, how much it costs for this. So we could technically, let's say, if we, this would look different, possibly if all brand-new teachers were there.
But that also applies to regular school.
Right, so it's all, there's a mix.
To the end with the total, it changes, like, we have an issue, this is a topic, it's a, with new teachers always at the lower performing schools. So that would, I mean, that all affects, I understand you're saying that it applies to all of them.
But I'm saying for a dollar amount, there's, I'll be honest, there was, there would be no way that you would be able to afford to pay sixty-five thousand dollars per student at two thousand kids.
I know, I, 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 that's part of the question.
And I don't even know how you, because.
Discussion for later, I've just pointed it out.
But when we look at the, the budget and where it looks. Everyone has a right to a free and appropriate education.
Right.
And so with federal funds and state funds, there's nothing that you can do. I mean, whatever our perception is, because those state dollars are gonna go, as long as that school has a school number, that money is entitled to go there, and so that's how the LEA, which is six fifty, and then within the six fifty, their, their branches. And so then, when we report to the state that this is a school, that we've determined it to be a school, and they tell us how many, we tell them how many students, it allot money to it, and whether it's two hundred kids versus two thousand, one hundred, twenty-six students, the state is gonna allot X amount of dollars, feds are gonna allot X amount of dollars to it.
One thing, I think, there are certain issues that happen with smaller schools as well, that I think are part of the disparity. When you think about unique positions at a school, like a social worker or a media coordinator, there is a media coordinator at Hager who serves twenty-one hundred kids, there's a media coordinator at Alderman who serves two hundred and eighty kids. They cost similar, the same, but the per pupil amount at Alderman is higher because there are less kids using that service. So the, a lot of that disparity just comes in the fact that we provide some things to every school just because they're a school of, bookkeeper, data manager, secretary, you know, all those things, cafeteria manager, whatever. Those things are, cost more per kid because the kids are smaller, it just means that there's so many kids at Hager, it divides out in a different way, if that makes sense.
So talk for a second about why we must maintain the alternative school, and why we must maintain the day treatment school, for people who don't know, just.
Well, for the, for the day treatment school, for, we have to have a place for students who, well, it's just gotta rely on, we have to provide an education for students. well, it's just gotta rely on, we have to provide an education for students. Students who require additional support, just like we have an, an AIG student who provide, needs additional support. We have to provide that by, for them. We just, it's the way that we look at it. So, um, a student needs unique therapy, whether it's OT, PT, um, counseling, whatever the, the theory, therapy is. By law, the IEP is a legally binding document. And the resources that are in there, that page that tells us this is what, the, the time limits that they have to have, that has been agreed upon by the LEA, that, um, IEP team, then tells us what services and what school they, they can go to. So, it's not, um, just X student goes over there. There's a, a legal document that tells us where we can support the kid, and what offerings we have to provide for them. So, it, that one's a federal mandate that we have to.
Can I just ask a question, Dr. Faust? And, and that is something that public schools have to provide, charter schools do not.
Right, right.
And that's the thing, we, they're, by law, mandated to provide services. And that's what we do in a public school system.
Well, I think the charters are, I'm not sure, they all, they won't all, they don't always.
I looked at their grades too.
Well, they don't have to meet, they, they have a whole different accountability, they don't, you don't have to be certified. You don't have to take exceptional kids, most don't run buses.
Right.
Most of their principals and teachers don't even come close to being certified.
And sometimes, well, we wanna talk about that. So, what will happen is, you can be at a charter or a private school, and we have to, if, if this school is your zone school, you can come from there and come to get our services and then go back. So, we're funding that too.
Wow. Like sports as well, isn't that true? Or is it, sports not part of that? I don't know if it is, I, I, I don't, but I give, I take your point. I mean, these public schools provide a lot more services.
It is probably a good time to talk, because at the, at last week's county budget workshop, they, they, they had some dialogue about charter and commissioners asking questions. So, um, because the charter, if I only get, if I get it right, charter comes out of our money, but transportation's not funded, I get that right?
My understanding is that money allocated can be used at the, now, at the discretion of the parent. They can homeschool them, they can buy books, they can pay somebody carrying back and forth to school, which is usually the barrier, because they don't run buses, so that opens charter schools to more kids. I don't think it's really got a limit on anymore.
So, from our, from our side, we receive money from the county. And then, based on the enrollment that charter schools turn in to us every month, we fund them, just like the county funds us. But the county gives us the money to be able to fund the charter schools.
But they do not fund transportation? That was a question that was asked last week.
I, I don't think, they're not required to. I can't speak to if, if none of them actually, I mean, some, some of them, I think, do provide transportation, but I, I couldn't tell you which ones. It's not a requirement.
Yeah, we're just, we're just required to write the check in.
Right.
Is it still true that if a student rolls into charter school and pass that, that two-week count, and they come back, that the money doesn't follow the child back to public schools?
That's true.
And my understanding is we have to pay.
That's the state money.
And by law, we have to write those checks to the charter schools within ten days of the money's deposited by the state of North Carolina.
So.
Into our.
We, we do not write the charter schools' checks for state or federal money, DPI. They go through DPI, just like we do to get their money.
It's extracted before we get it.
Right, they take it away before we receive it. Now, we are required to make payment to charter schools related to county funding within thirty days of, of their receiving their enrollment or invoice.
So, this per pupil, there's, this is not a part of the, um, what is the word you used? Right sizing the budget?
So, when you're right sizing, there may be, um, positions that are, um, no longer at school, so you will then see, there will be a difference. As Dr. Barnes was explaining, so, or it may be that, um, and we'll talk about this when we do the budget workshop, there will be some that will go support other schools. They'll still have a home base, but they'll be adding additions to that school. So, then, technically, um, some of these schools will have, this number will go up on other schools because we'll be splitting the, the cost. But we still just write it out of one, they're still zoned for school. Their home school would be School A, but then they would be at School B also to support. But the, the dollar amount will come from School A, because it's.
Some of the lobbying changes we've looked at, instead of giving everyone the same amount of everything, we've built it by size of student population instead, which will then bring these numbers closer together. Does that make sense, Ashley?
Yes.
Okay, any more questions on this? So, we're running ahead of schedule, so we, we have room to add if we would like to, or we can just end early. And I noticed on the, the hundred thousand and over, I noticed that legal was at three hundred thousand for, um, twenty twenty-three, which is less than twenty twenty-two, which I find, as much as we use the attorney, that that's illogical. But, um, I'd ask Ashley to talk to us where we are with that legal proposal.
Oh, sure. I did wanna give an update on that, actually. So, just to give some information as far as where we've posted the, um, request for qualifications, we've posted the proposals, um, requests for proposals, with, of course, on our website. And we've got a link, um, now on the front website, so it's very visible for anyone who's interested. We've also posted with the Office of Historically Underutilized Businesses. We did that March thirteenth. We've worked with North Carolina School Board Association, and they've also sent out the posting to their, um, listserv. About fifty-four firms that work with them that do this type of business. So, they've, um, sent that out to their members for us. We posted in the Star News as well on the fifteenth. So, um, as of, um, yesterday, we have three proposals that have been submitted. And so, we're on track, um, planning the, I think, March thirty, thirtieth it closes. And I think thirty-first is when we're having our meeting. And we'll actually go through, the committee will go through and look at those proposals.
Go ahead.
I've asked this question before, so I apologize to ask again, but I just wanna make sure I understand it correctly. This total for twenty-three, three hundred thousand, that, that's not just the board's attorney for our board meetings.
Right.
Access to our directors, assistant superintendents, answer problems in discipline schools, all of the above.
Right.
That also includes lawyers involved in our suit arena.
Right.
So, can you tell me what that is without, just with our?
I don't have that, I don't have that with me.
So, we get an itemized, um, invoice monthly that separates what they're doing. We'd have to literally go back and.
I just, it's not really three hundred thousand dollars for.
Just not for board.
Yeah, I wanna make sure if you're listening, that's not for who come to our board meetings who we call.
It's for the entire organization. And like you said, it's for, um, whenever, any, the, the ones who can call are the senior staff. And now, they can put executive directors on the telephone with them, but what we, um, do first is that if a department needs it, they go to the senior staff first to make sure they can't answer the question, and then we reach out to the attorney.
Obviously, a system outside, that's, that's, every week, every day.
Every hour.
All the people who wanna challenge us.
And it's not actually even only the challenging part, it, uh, for bonds and forfeitures. It could be land, um, it, it.
Question about a contract.
Questions about the contracts. Yes, it could be, yeah.
Yeah.
There are, um, any number, um, you know, special ed, um, there could be just any department. I think all departments have probably spoken, some speak more frequently with our attorneys than, than others. But we use them as, um, we go through the invoice monthly, and I'm asking, or I'm actually calling them and saying, say more about this one than that, actually. When I call to question it, that's actually, um, a fee too. So, we try to make sure we get it right. Because they know I do call them and say, I don't believe that's correct.
And they have to answer.
We had our meeting the third, the third of April.
Maybe I may have misspoke.
Which meeting's the third of April?
The, what?
The attorney one?
Yeah, for the proposal, we wanted to check your calendar, because I feel like we did it on the night we put. Oh, you, you have it in your phone? I don't know, I put it in my phone when we were there that night at the meeting.
Oh, yeah, the committee meeting for.
Yeah, it's me, you and I and Ms. Sut.
I don't have my calendar with me.
Okay. Well, I've got two o'clock on, um, the third of April.
Yeah, I do remember that. Do you have that, you guys? The third of April, the, um, attorney committee meeting? Okay, and Mr. McManus's request, can we see that breakdown by then? Can we get that so that he'll have his answers in terms of?
What was the breakdown?
The legal.
Oh.
Mr. McManus, can you say your question again?
Separate our board attorney firm versus attorneys and other attorneys involved. So, it doesn't make everybody think that our attorney comes to the board meetings, who, we do allow, not to mention amount.
So, not, um, more, um, narrow than just Therrington Smith.
Well, any involvement we have with other attorneys with suits, as an example, that everyone knows about. I mean, I mean, that's not a cheap expenditure as well.
So, um, the insurance is paying for, for that. So, our, that didn't come out of our, unless it's the other, the other attorney that was hired from the board. That one does, but the, um, litigation that Liberty has for them, that's a different part. We don't see that one because the insurance company is, is taking care of that.
Can I ask how much that cost us so far?
We would have to get that one from, I don't know if Liberty, they, I guess they would be able to do, because they don't, that's in our policy.
Yeah, it's, it's not billed to us, I, I could request that, but I don't, we, we don't see that.
And there's no recovery.
For clarification, I just wanna make sure if, if I'm bringing something back, it's what you're looking for, so.
Well, you may have answered it, if that's not inclusive in this amount.
Oh, oh, okay, right, it's not, mm-mm.
Well, any, any number that we need for, for discussion for that would be awesome.
I mean, I would just imagine what you were gonna do, which is like, I guess, how much, that's our budget. Every, obviously, everybody knows how budgets works, and you say, this is what we're gonna need this year, and how much we've actually used of that budget.
Right.
Whether we're over or under, I think, just general, just in general.
And do we wanna see that just for this fiscal year? Is that what, that's what I heard?
I'm okay for that, I mean.
I always like to see three years to compare, just, and, and we've got COVID in there, so that makes it tricky. You, you did some, you know, I don't, I do.
Budget and expenses for three years?
Yeah, remember you did something for us, and it, and it changed a little bit, but I have it in my other notebook. Remember you did.
So, she.
Five years, didn't you?
She did the five-year.
Let's just update that.
And when there was a staff attorney.
Oh, right, yeah.
And then, she had to go back and add in the staff and the paralegal, um, salary, because they offer that same, then she gave you the, the side-by-side.
Yeah, so just update that. Updated it.
With expenses, just update it with it, is that what you?
Because what I did is I went through, um, the attorney told me the dates of the filing of the cases that we have. So, I put it onto that too, but my numbers are not complete because things changed. So, we could, we could marry those dates, um, that came out of an email from him. So, we could marry those dates to the, to the years. Would make, just, I'm just logic, I think logically like that. And then, I compared two years, three years, and four years, pre-pandemic, post-pandemic, and what it was like when we had a contract attorney now, and when we, when we had an on-staff attorney. So, we could just update all those, I mean, I think you already done it. We just need to, we, we've not disseminated it to everybody. I don't even have it.
Okay.
I haven't touched it.
I, I thought that went out to in the board packet, was it in the board packet?
So, do we, it's actually supposed to be bringing the invoice and separate out the, the board versus what goes on in the.
Like contract review.
It's a good idea.
So, we have to call them and get them to separate them.
Is that what you were interested in, Mr. McManus?
Well, I just think it'd be interesting, because if we're looking at attorneys that, uh, I just think we need to know where we are before we jump to something else, we don't know where we're coming from.
We're spending more money than you are. Right. I can barely say that.
Okay, um. Are we ready to leave legal services?
Yep.
Okay, last thing, committee goals. You guys created this committee with five other people. So, do you have any recollection of what your goals were? What do you wanna see? Where do we go from here?
I don't have the description in front of me. Uh, I didn't personally create this committee. I know we had a budget committee, which was everybody, and we're gonna have that meeting next week. I was, I, I, I can't say and tell you the reason why this was created separately. My assumption was that we could be, as a committee, we could go to other board members and kind of explain some of the things, you know. That would make the process easier, perhaps, for, for Ashley and Dr. Faust and any staff member. I don't know what goals we would have, except for better, you know, more communication, maybe having conversations about what we've learned. You know, people can obviously watch them, but I mean, if, if, if the conversation we had, maybe they have questions that they want us to bring. That's my thoughts, you, do you?
I agree with exactly what you said, I, I was surprised when I saw both of those. I thought there might be a duplicate, but.
Yeah. I know Josie had sent a question and, um, about salaries. And I told her, you know, salaries are gonna be for the budget workshop. So, I know, but for me, it was just kind of to two-step it, to where we looked at all the other, at least had some broad knowledge of it before we go looking at it complete and digging into salaries and benefits and so on. I still don't have a real good grasp of what our part is in terms of budget reduction, other than you show up and say, like it or not, and we vote. Is there any part that we play in helping you with that?
So, what, what technically, um, we do is, so, by state statute, I have to present a budget. So, the superintendent has to present a budget. So, what you can do, when it comes to cutting, like, we will provide information, um, with you where we need to size up and see, and oftentimes, you can also say, well, I would like to see, um, I would like to have X. And then, we would say, okay, you want A, B, C, and D, so we've got to, in order to balance it, we've gotta get rid of, uh, D, E, and F. And so, it's give and take on there.
A part of your question, if I may?
Yes.
I think what you're asking is how do, where do you start, like a zero-based budget? We have to, at least, I support, we have to allow that our staff, who've done this for years, like Mr. Anderson in, in buses. If he doesn't know in maintenance, my goodness gracious, and all the surprises that come with it. So, I guess my answer is, they know well from experience and their background, an arena of which we're gonna have to deal with, and then they have to go from there. And I guess we could, we hadn't the votes to curtail it or increase it or go away with it. But I think we have to trust, there's no way in the world that you and I could sit down for years and have that experience and also understand all the costs that we, like, we would never think of and/or experiences. So, it's a trust factor, it's a professional factor, that you provide us with what you, what you feel is deemed necessary for a successful school year, and that's what we base it on. Definitely, I guess, being a little picky sometimes about some stuff.
Right, and so, when, I think individuals were saying that we were cutting, we were at a, that budget deficit, and we were cutting ten percent of our budget. So, it's a four-hundred-million-dollar budget, we're not trying to cut four-hundred-thousand dollars. If we were four-hundred-thousand dollars over.
That'd be four million, wouldn't it?
Four hundred and twenty-two.
I'm sorry, yes, yes, or, yes, we would, um, that would be not right, if we were that far of. So, so, we're looking specifically, what we can do is local funds. That's the only budget that we can technically maneuver.
Okay.
The other, so that's the, what we get from the county, so that's your ninety-one million. The state is already set, um, the federal is already set, can't really do anything. Like I said, we, sometimes we don't like it, we want more, we wanna shift it in different angles. Like I said, we, sometimes we don't like it, we want more, we want to shift it in different angles, but they, it's literally how we, we can't do anything with that. Only thing we can literally do something with is the local. And so that 91, and then some of that goes to charter. In that addition is we are looking at new money versus, so when I say new money, the money that we are getting, that's coming up. That's what the meetings are for. So last year's budget is already allocated. So in order to unallocate, you'd have to go in, open it, recall a vote, and revote on a balanced budget. So each year, it's what are your wants or what are your not-want for your new budget? So when we're talking or we're looking, that's what we would want to know. Like what is it that you're looking for in the, in the new ask, the new budget? Because we, they have, when I say they, I mean departments have ask, board has ask. And so we take from it the priorities. Look at your priorities and then we'll say, okay, this is where it needs to be with the new money. And basically, we start from there. And so that's what we've been doing. We've been first cleaning out cobwebs, saying this didn't work. They work somewhat of a zero base. I do go in and ask about money and if there's money in a line item, well, there was too much in there. Why is there, well, so I talk about excellence. How do you get to excellence? This is still not repaired. You've had X amount of dollars in that line item to fix it. Tell me why it's not. And so we sit down and spend time with each individual, and they know that. And we talk about it, and then we'll tell them, they had to come in with already a reduction. And then after the reduction, then they had to defend why they continue to need X amount of dollars in their budget. So technically, their budget could have been shifted, couldn't have been, it's like, a lot of theirs are attached to, not necessarily people, but to programs. It could be curriculum, it could be contracts.
So that's. Mainly, look what happened to Brogdon Hall, the last place, oh my gosh.
I think he probably has the, I don't know, curriculum and Eddie probably have the largest budgets. And then Julie's coming up the rear like she, but you can't really do a lot with Julie's budget with the student.
Or curriculum budget.
Or curriculum, we have to have, we have to have a curriculum. And it is expensive, I mean, it's, that's just the, because we have so many students, that's what makes it expensive. And then it's reoccurring. So that's the thing, we have to look at their budgets to see what is one-time versus reoccurring. And if it's the one-time, or even if it's reoccurring, we say, how do I know it's providing value-add? Where, and they will talk about, where's the data? Okay, so there was one who was wanting to increase their budget. We're like, well, you can't increase because you have things that weren't working. So within your budget now, what could you move around to fix? So it's a, it's a barter, like they're bartering and they do well for why their employees need to do this and what they need. And I'm pushing back and saying, well, looking at your value-add, it didn't get your, we call it ROI, return on investment. The return on investment didn't equate to what you put in there. So we've got to do something different. So then, once they get to this table now, they can actually, they polished and buffed. And so you can ask them anything about their budget and they're like.
A 3K tablets that we saw over. That's a good investment, isn't it?
But yes.
That was a donor, they were donating.
That was a 3K fund, so yes. What was we getting guys, the MOU for that this time?
That's amazing data for me to watch.
The data agreement.
He said he wants more. Never looked up. He said he wants more.
Oh, what can you do with a curriculum budget? Who are going to? Curriculum is strict.
Well, defensive there. Go ahead, Ms. Walker, ask a question.
So, well, I've got two things. The first thing is the capital outlay, we did that separate because the county funds that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a completely kind of separate budget.
Totally different.
Totally different budget, okay? And that's why we had a different presentation.
Yes.
Just making that point for, and the second point is, I was just looking at our description of finance committee, which I think will help us here.
Oh, you found it, yeah.
Yes, I did. It says, the purpose of this committee is to improve communication and transparency of financial reporting, budget development and budget reporting. Committee provides input and feedback for the superintendent and staff. Based on the information gathered in these meetings and state slash federal guidelines, the staff will improve reporting processes and communications. Committee is composed of a minimum of two board members, chief financial officer, three individuals from the senior leadership team, and a representative from each school level, elementary, middle, and high.
Oops.
Whoops. So that, I think that is kind of what I felt was like, just more of a communication tool for us and, and more transparency kind of, you know, mechanism for, for people that are listening to know. And I think it's helpful. I think a lot of people are going to understand a lot more.
Yeah, and that brought up a question. Explain, because I want to come back to capital for a minute. Explain the separation of capital and this budget in the process.
Okay, okay.
Please.
So the two, so capital, of course, are repairs, building, playground. That's one fund, so that's a total different pot of money. Then we have our operating budget. So our operating budget is what we're talking about right now. So that's another, but it's a local operating budget and we have our local capital. So capital provides us the opportunity where you come in or the, I think by law, no, I think by law, our county is responsible for the upkeep of our buildings. And so we create items, we come to the committee. The committee then helps us prioritize those and then the ask. And then we gnaw at the commissioner's ankles or wear them down. And then we say thank you. Right now, they are, hopefully, they're listening, but they're going to be able to do the first nine of those one-time fixes for us. And so that's what, that's, but that's a whole nother line item of money. So we don't want to confuse capital outlay and operations. Operations is, that'll be in your salaries, that'll be in your curriculum expenditures, your.
Utility bill.
Utility bill. But capital is building functions, like literally structures and.
And normally, normally another difference is one-time versus reoccurring.
Yes.
So the capital outlay, you're, you're funding projects with a different pot of money. So the way the county identifies that money is different than the reoccurring operating. So that's, that's a difference too. And usually it's so much, so there's so much information in capital outlay that we, in the past, we've just chosen to have two separate meetings versus trying to cover everything in one meeting.
Well, yeah, it's good not to come, commingle it in your head. Commissioner Hayes asked me last night, how much money is it going to take to fix Brogdon Hall? But you just said item nine, and item nine is one below the line, Mr. Eddie's line. So they're indicating that they're going to do that?
Yes.
The leaders?
That's, well, that's the goal. That's what we've been in conversation.
Well, she asked how much, so should I tell her the 205 is the number?
Yes, yes.
And she will ask me, is that the last ask you're going to make for a year?
But, and then we go back over to operation. So I don't know if theirs comes out of two pots.
Let's wait on that because I did send that question to Eddie and I didn't hear back. So I just want to make sure that is the last.
Well, I reminded her at the age of the building and.
Right.
Old buildings are kind of like boats, you just keep shoving money on them. But it's, you know, it's iconic and everyone loves it and it has to be done. So I wouldn't want to say that's the final dollar, but, okay, go ahead.
So that was, no, I was just to your point, the blue line.
Yeah, it is below the line, so that's, because I wanted to ask, I'm not on that committee, but I wanted to ask that we do that. Because, I mean, face it, nobody wants water running down the wall when it rains. And then you've got mold, and then you've got the liability, and it just goes on and on.
And I think that helps to have conversations with our commissioners because I think that's probably where it started, when we were having a conversation with a couple of them. Maybe that's where Commissioner Hayes got it.
Oh, I think she listened to that meeting.
You had over really, if we, I don't know where we'll all be when it happens, but discussion quality needs to start. That school needs to be totally gutted and redone.
Oh, my gosh.
And bring it up to the same standards as possible, to the newest standards. That's our first high school, my wife, my daughter went to the Hanover. It's, it just needs to be evolved to the present. If you walk through it, it needs a lot of work.
And so that.
We'll have to really beg the capital.
So that's a bond. So that type of will be a bond versus a capital project.
The alumni from your Hanover, they'd be all over.
They would be, absolutely.
That's a strong alumni.
If you're listening, push it.
Yeah. All right, so where do we go from here? Do we schedule another meeting? What do you think our next step is?
So my question is, if the finance committee, do we want to meet like legislative every quarter? Do we want to meet mostly during budget season? I guess that would be another question, because I don't think we have any kind of regular meeting times.
Yeah, no, we're in uncharted territory, so.
Well, ask the chair what the intent was for the meeting.
I'm sorry?
What the intent was in the forming of the committee.
I wasn't there.
We can ask.
Yeah, well, she, she's read what it was. Maybe, maybe the surviving board members remember. I don't remember that meeting. I don't remember that meeting. I do remember it, but I don't remember who said what. I just remember there was a lot of disagreement, of course. And, and we can't solve this ourselves, so let's make a committee that'll solve it and then come back to us. Now, one of my questions would be, for us as a board, I don't want to repeat what happened last year with the open warfare on the dais over the budget. So if, if we've got asks for, not the capital, but the other, can we tell staff now that that's where we're thinking?
That would be good.
I personally don't have an ask.
Y'all, no ask over here?
Not that I know of. I may lay down tonight and come up with one, but right now, I'm just, I'll be thrilled when we're on the other side of budget. So if you guys have an ask, or if the rest of the board has an ask, it'd be maybe good to bring it to the budget workshop? What do you think?
If we could have it honestly before then, then I could at least cost it out, even if funding is identified, I could at least cost it out.
So that is up to us three-year. If they're having watched the meeting to talk to our fellow board members and say, you have questions, send them to Ms. Sutton before Monday is at one o'clock as a budget, preferably before the weekend.
That would be nice.
Definitely.
So the next three, four days.
All right, well, I think we need to talk about the white elephant in the room. Last year, you fought like crazy over teachers' assistance. And a lot of the county commissioners told us that they really wanted to fund the teachers' assistance and they were kind of ticked that it didn't happen. And I could gather from the conversation last week that they're inclined to be nice to transportation. I think they got that message the last time we met about transportation, how important bus drivers were. I really felt like they got that, based on what I heard him say. But where are we? Times have changed, the economy's changed. Where are we on that discussion? We might as well talk about it, because we're going to get questions.
Kind of speaking my language. That is the.
Yeah, I'll start saying, I don't remember us arguing. We were, I remember exactly what I said, I'll push for the highest dollar possible.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And obviously, I was, I was in that camp too. But now we're having to cut, so what do we do? We don't want to wait until budget night and fight over it.
I don't think it has to be a fight. I think the commissioners, if they're listening, and we should have conversations with them about, you know, what. You know, I think the problem that at least I had personally was the fact that they were coming to our meetings upset that they had to work two and three jobs, that inflation was higher, the cost of living here is higher, that we couldn't control as board members, as, as a district. You know, rent high, rent, rents higher. And so, you know, the ask, and we had our, we had our study done, it was professionally done study. And the recommendation is pretty much what we hoped for, that we were told a few things, to be kind. Obviously, there was a lot of S or fund money that was there, and I think the commissioners maybe felt. I don't know what they felt, so I'm not, I'm not going to read their mind or put words in their mouth. But, you know, they, they need attention. That's how I feel, and I still feel that way. So I guess we just need to have conversations.
Okay.
If you read enough articles about the reduction across this country in teachers, some people think it's just us, that's not accurate at all. We're better off at a lot, a lot of people. But the whole country is experiencing a disenchantment from professional educators. Part of the reason is a lot of them stay in debt for 20, 25 years. A lot of it is the attacks that are, let's be honest, attacks that are coming from the public, on schools, and individuals, and positions, et cetera. And it's just making things nasty. You're always defending yourself. They don't understand the actual machinery that dictates and grinds every day that has a lot to do with, not Eric, but those who've been around for a long time and been in the system, you know what, how it works. But, and then the fact that, I'll be honest, the last two, Associated Press wrote the last one I read before yesterday. A lot of teachers are having to deal with kids who are not adequately prepared for their classes. And we all know that's true, we don't want to talk about it. We had kids who were a year or two behind before the pandemic ever hit. And now we've got kids that are, it's horrendous across the whole country. And so, but we're, I'm not sure I have an answer, but we send kids ahead and then we get little, because they don't pass the state exam or they didn't do this or that. And then we want to argue over calendars. Well, the state dictated those parameters, and I hope that's going to work its way out, hopefully, for the, but anyhow. So I say that because the last thing I think we need to do is reduce anyone's salary if we cut anything in the budget. That's, that's got to be hands-off as far as our staff and our schools, et cetera, I'm telling you. That's just, we just can't touch people like that.
I don't think that's the plan.
Well, no, but I want to say it.
I was just making.
Because I've, teachers worry about that. Tell us what she brought up last time.
Right.
Yes, sir. You know more about that than all of us.
So.
Mr. Barnes, he has his hand.
Is it possible, I mean, yeah, tell us where we are, because you, you said we're reducing. You had a formula last year and it's in place, so maybe update us on that.
Our goal, working with Ashley, working with the HR team, with principals, obviously, no one who wants to work with us needs to not be able to. So our goal is to use attrition over the course and adaptation to jobs that we have vacancies for, not just in one specific area, but if you're licensed in several areas. As we reduce, making sure we're using opportunities from attrition to make sure we right-size slowly, deliberately, and consistently so that no one has to go lose their job. We want everyone to continue to work with us. We know we need great people, we know how hard everybody works. So it may be that we're shifting the role of your job, but trying to make sure we keep that in the same vein so people don't lose salary. Because at the end of the day, people still need to provide for their families and their livelihood. I would just say, just a reminder, Ashley, in case you want to say this instead of me, but we will have to match whatever the governor or the legislature puts out as a raise as well. And looking at the governor's current budget, that's a lot. So I would be cautious about putting something in place without knowing what that price tag meant to look like.
So to help with, with that, I have a couple of things to share. So when we're looking at the budget, the first thing is when we get the budgets pre, his, the governor's pre-budget. So in there, it's over two years, 16% increase. So remember, you have, so the state will pay for state employees, doesn't necessarily pay for federal increases. And it doesn't pay for local. So if you put, so yes, if you put those employees in that equation, then you're, you really will outpace yourself. And so we have to be very careful when we're projecting a budget and saying, okay, what can we do versus, so will it be 16, will it be 10? We won't know until, hopefully, it'll come out in May. But oftentimes, it doesn't come out until October. And so we will have balanced the budget. You've balanced the budget, this is what you're supposed to be paying, then you get a state, this is what you have to pay. So then, of course, the state, that's fine with the state, but then federal doesn't increase those salaries. So then we've got to go in and bring it back to the board and say, oh, we need an additional X amount of dollars that was not budgeted for. And so then that's where we have to tap into fund balance to get that, that money. So that's where I think this is the, the great conversation piece in it. What I will and I want us to remember is oftentimes, we only think of teachers and individuals who work inside the school building. We only think of teachers and individuals who work inside the school building. So we have about four thousand employees, and we forget that we have a maintenance department. And so I get it that we want to increase this out, so I'm always trying to, it's the, you know, leading the organization, I have to look out for everyone. So we aren't paying market salary for plumbers, for electricians, HVAC. So when we are looking at those positions, so in, you know, that person may be making seventeen dollars an hour here, but they can go out and make thirty-two somewhere else. I don't know that, so HVAC people don't leave on this. But literally, if, we're not matching the market. And so we have to always be knowledgeable about, yes, we want everyone to have a great salary. But we also want to understand that we have to look at our entire organization. And for those individuals who aren't front-facing for students, they're also making this building cool enough. When, I get it that everyone will say, everyone's job is hard. I get it. But we have to understand what does it require to, to make sure that we are marketable? And we're keeping up with the market value of those other individuals. So I just want us to always consider the entire organization.
That's what we're talking about, right? TAs and the custodial staff, and that's what we had the salary study done on, I believe. And that's, that's, I agree. I think that's what we're concerned with.
You talked with the county commissioners that day about a kind of an across-the-board lift. I can't remember the details of it. Rather than specifically saying, we're going to, we're going to do the TAs this much and the bus drivers this much, you were going to explain that. Is that going to come into play?
That's, well, before we found out, that's like doing a percentage, but then it's like, okay, if the governor says he wants to do. Right now it says sixteen pers- sixteen percent increase, I think ten or sixteen, I can't remember what it's.
Ten for this coming up year.
That's for all state employees.
All state employees.
Yeah, so that's all four thousand employees. So it'd be a ten percent increase. So then Ashley doesn't build our budget on a ten percent increase, so we know that it's got to go through the general assembly, and then it'll wash out. And so we are hoping that we will have some numbers that we can. That are, that are, that we're able to forecast a better budget. So we didn't build the budget on a ten percent increase because we built it on a four, because that just came out last week. And so when we, we, we have to forecast. Once we get our planning numbers from the state, then we can create the budget. And so we just have four percent in there. Now, if they come out with more, then we will have to come back and ask for, for more. So that's why it's kind of a, our budget is unique in the fact that, yes, there's seven hundred other positions that are out there that you have to fund. That aren't state and federally funded. Those are locally created.
Are all of those locally funded? All of those other ones locally funded? You were just talking about those seven hundred, meaning like. I know the teaching positions are funded a certain way, but like everyone else.
Well, some, there are some teaching positions in local. So they don't meet the, if they don't meet the state, if they don't meet the state formula. The state says you should have X amount of teachers at this building. If we give more, then they're locally funded. So there could be, there are certified and non-certified positions in the local budget.
The non-certified are all locally funded?
No.
No? Okay.
There are, some are federally funded. The majority of our TAs are federally funded there in our special ed classes, I would say.
So the, the lift that you had been talking about, is it going to happen or still under consideration?
That would be under consideration. What we were talking about at that is versus giving one a dollar amount, you look at individuals, not the, if I'm quoting right. I was saying, looking at individuals who have, make less than one hundred, so it was like ninety-nine thousand nine hundred to give them an increase. And, but that's where we, we left that.
And I would like to say one thing to keep in mind is we were able to last year get rid of the compression in our local, local salary scales, which is huge. Because if you talk to other school systems, they still have the compression. So we, if you're talking about just, just giving an increase to certain grades or groups like you're suggesting, just don't forget how that affects that salary scale. Because then that means it's going to bring the different grades closer together, and we're going to be back in a situation with compression again. Because otherwise, if you give one grade an increase, it's really expensive to trickle that increase through the whole table. So that's just something else to keep in mind. If you do a salary increase versus a bonus or supplement.
For the people listening, will you explain compression, please?
So that would be, for example, if we would have brought everyone up to fifteen dollars an hour, and we already had people on the scale. So before we did that, if we had people on the scale making thirteen dollars an hour, let's, I don't, this isn't correct, but say this is grade fifty-seven. And then it, say we have a fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, and let's just say grade sixty was only making seventeen dollars an hour, going from thirteen to seventeen. Anyone who was at thirteen and below fifteen would all be making fifteen now. And then the person who was making fifteen stays at making fifteen. So, so that's just something to think about. If you all, and so now you have a hundred people that might be making the same hourly rate of pay versus before, there was differences. You know, a dollar or fifty cent difference hourly rate of pay between these different groups.
So the grades are years of service?
No, is, you want to answer that one?
Sort of. So we use what's called a step and lane salary structure, whereas jobs have different grades, and then they have different steps. The teacher's salary goes up a year each step. It's mandated by the state that it does. But non-certified, they only see a step increase if we put it into our budget. So most of the compression came for a long period of time, the state, no one authorized step increases. So everyone started bumping up on each other like someone stopping walking on one of the moving sidewalks of the airport. Everyone backed up on it. Ashley was able to fix the schedule last year, spread everybody back out again. But if we're not careful, we re-compress everybody if we're not careful. And then people who've been here for different lengths of time are making the same salary.
Right.
And so what happens, so on that scale, what he's talking about, so you have your columns, and in each sale, there are people in there. So there, at fifteen dollars an hour, there are two hundred people in that sale. And so what they're saying, so you're funding the two hundred, but, and I'm saying the same thing they're saying, but I just want you to understand how it works. So you have years of experience to keep in mind, and then you have the, the job.
Grade.
The job grade to keep in mind. So what you want to do is, yes, if, so if you're bringing a salary up, you've also got to increase the other one by a percentage to make sure that you don't compress the salaries. You can't do them unless, at the same time, unless you have a lot of money. So you have to decide, okay, so we get rid of compression, so then what does it take to keep the cushion or the, the steps in between? And so then we have to do, we would then do, look at the salaries across the board. This is like anyone ninety-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine and below. Get that, give them two percent increase. That way it doesn't mess with the compression. It requires everyone to continue to move and flow. There's a lot that goes on behind the scenes. So when we get a number, it's like, okay, so now how do we make it work in the, in the sales?
So is there additionally, additional costs to matching things as well, meaning like insurance and?
Yeah, and I was going to.
Every year our insurance costs more to provide, our hospitalization number costs more, and our retirement, not yours, Mr. Manis, we talked about that before. The cost of retirement actually increases every year because the contribution costs more.
Well, I had the question too. Let's talk about fifteen dollars an hour, because as an employer, I know fifteen dollars an hour is not fifteen dollars an hour. Because you've got matching money, you've got to pay out benefits and so on. So what's the real, what's the real fifteen dollars an hour? Can you explain that?
Yes, I can. So what we talk about is the, the employee, the money an employee makes, their salary, does not match the district's investment in the employee. So for an example, a teacher, the average teacher's salary may be forty-five thousand dollars, if you look at the states, and I'm just ballparking that number. But you will see that our investment in the employee is just over seventy thousand. So when we calculate the average cost of an employee for things like if Title One wants to buy a teacher or something like that, you have to add in seven and a half percent for social security. You have to add in twenty-four percent for retirement and six thousand seven hundred dollars-ish for hospitalization. Add that all together, and that's what the employee costs, the district. So you'll see, and we've actually done a report, I think you guys saw it last year, where I took just random, you know, a fifteen-year TA costs, they make this much in salary, they cost this much in investment. A teacher, just to see the difference in scope, but it's, it's a significant number. It's usually somewhere between twenty and thirty thousand dollars. Of a local, of a district investment in each employee. And then, of course, when you think you have four thousand, that number sort of escalates on itself.
And so you'll see that in our budget also, where we, we have benefits in there for the district, because we also account for the increases. And so those are the particulars that you want to pay close attention to in, in the salary. So when you're doing an increase, how much does it actually cost us? So you say two percent, but then we also have to give two percent to, you know, your retirement or whatever. Like it all goes in there because we've got to make sure that it, it pans out. The last thing you want to do is, we haven't done it, but you can give the increase to student, to the, to the employee, but not put it into the retirement, and then that makes a.
No, we don't want to.
Yeah. So we're always asking for more because you have to do it in, in multiple ways, yeah.
It also is challenging when you look at the teacher assistant, the state will, state will fund teacher assistants based on the average teacher assistant salary. And if we increase what we pay our teacher assistants, that just means we have less of them. Because they don't fluctuate how much money they send. And on average, our teachers' assistants make more than the average teacher assistant salary does. So it costs us more than, than, than the state provides for us for each one.
So what you're saying is we then would have to supplement salaries.
Correct.
Through local funds.
That's where we have conversations.
Yes, so.
Major complication.
So even, so if you wanted to do X amount of dollars, then it's how much above the state would, are you going to be paying out of a local fund? And so it's, it's a challenging.
The state, sixteen? Didn't they just raise it, or they're getting ready to raise it?
For what? I'm sorry.
The hourly rate? I felt like last year, fifteen, weren't they going to step to sixteen?
No, not, not the state.
But they didn't change their lop and formula for how much they pay for teacher assistants either.
Right.
They pay about, they say a teacher assistant with benefits is about thirty-eight thousand and some change. And so they calculate that by how many students we have, and then say, here's your entire teacher assistant budget, seven point six million dollars, boom. And then we have to divide out how much that costs us to employ them, and it costs us more than the state gives us.
Do we know why they did that? I'm just asking.
I don't know anymore than why they would only think that a school with a thousand kids needs an AP.
Just one AP.
Just one AP.
You made a great point though. Lately, it's been a tendency for things to start in the fall that we would have liked to have had done in spring or summer. I mean, so our bidding, man, I would say tread lightly until the fall.
Yeah. Ten, ten to sixteen percent is a pretty good spread. So if, if.
Don't give me chest palpitations.
It would be too. If your, if your, if your intention is, is to ask.
I missed that.
That they bring us some proposal for funding the TAs, now would be a good time to create that ask. And figure out where, where it would come from.
I think this is the perfect.
How many budgets did you have last year? Was that an all-time record proposals?
It's the most I've ever done.
It was a lot.
I think there were five or six.
There are a lot of conversations had around this funding. That's all I remember.
Yeah, yeah, and the discrepancy of when. And then after all that, then they sort of loosened up some of the guidelines, at least I think they did.
I think so.
I remember reading about that, thinking, well, shoot, it's a little late to the party. Anything else? Because I'm actually, y'all, I'm not sitting on anything. It feels good.
So why don't we take a look at, and we can give funding, so this will be hypothetical. Looking at those individuals that make less than one hundred K with a two percent. And the reason why, I mean, you know, we may or we may not be able to, based on it, but I just believe in looking at the organization you have to touch. Everyone, I get it when we were looking at the equity and, again, but our ops side falls short on a lot of, a lot of our deals. They wrangle snakes for us. And that's not in the job description that they do. They go and they, they build doorways. I'm sure they probably had something to do with those things. And they don't have the work area, we'll talk about capital, they have to go, sometimes they'll go to the schools and build it. And then put it on a truck and then take it somewhere else, because maybe we just need to, maybe, I think another, we can take a field trip to the maintenance area. So you can see where they work and what they do and how it's worked. Last year I was sharing with you, we have a total of. Four, four plumbers?
What'd you say?
And that's including their supervisor, or maybe five, including their supervisor to handle the entire district. That's it.
Go to the bus garage in the morning.
So, I mean, so that we can see, and it, it opened my eyes to a different world when I went over and I sat and just talked and looked at what they're doing and how they do it. And they do it without, not saying anyone doesn't do it without a good spear, but just so you can see the, oftentimes we tour the classrooms and we tour the schools. But I want you to see what the rest of the organization does. I think that will, that'll.
It's a silly question. Do locally funded positions operate, the plumbers, are they locally funded?
Those are locally. Because then the state gives us just a pot of money in.
It's called non-instructional support money, isn't it?
Yeah, but most, most of our maintenance operations is locally funded. We, we don't, usually, that category that we get from the state is normally used for clerical. And, and some custodians, but normally that's coming from local.
So if you did the, under the ninety-nine, what, what job descriptions are we talking about that fall in that?
Oh, that, I think you almost might be easier finding the ones that don't.
Right.
Okay, that's interesting.
Yeah, the ones that are sitting around the table.
Okay.
I think some, probably some principals.
A few directors, a few high school principals, probably.
High school principals.
Don't, okay.
But you could throw a dart and hit almost anybody else in the internet.
So is that going to be a higher dollar amount than the proposal last year to come up to the seventeen? Isn't that like between five and seven million dollars, just off the top of my head, per year?
I don't know.
Do you remember?
I don't, I can't remember. I'm looking at Ashley.
Yeah, I'm looking at.
Ashley's usually, we're both a good one.
It was like sixteen million or fifteen?
Yeah.
Something like twenty.
Okay, so it's way more than.
But that, but it was also fixing the scale. So the higher you went up to, on that hourly rate of pay, the, you had to keep increasing everyone. Because our, we were able to get rid of compression last year. So we were getting rid of compression at the same time as going up to the fifteen dollars an hour. So, and I think that's what you would want to do again, because you, you don't want to create another problem down the road.
It's just, it's been, it will be twelve months by the time it's done, and, and look at, you know, the cost of gas and bacon and electricity and all that. And so to be honest, the teachers' assistants are in worse shape this year than they were last year. And so it's, it's got to come back around for discussion, so we might as well prep for it now and figure out if there's any way to fund it.
Well, there are two different opportunities. There are what's called cost of living adjustments, which is this two percent, that's one. And then a step increase, which means move people down the scale, and that helps make sure that people don't get backed up on each other. Usually you build both in the budget you build anyway.
So, so normally I would include the step in the first one percent. So, so normally, I would include the step in the first one percent. For the most part, our local salary scales have one percent in between the steps. And so what, if, if the state does amend a salary increase mandate of one percent, I would do a step, fund, use that one percent to fund a step for our employees.
Okay. All right, what are you guys over there figuring out? Do you wanna share?
No, no, I don't wanna share. It's just a secret.
All right, well, all right, so anything else?
Did we finish up on our goals? I think perhaps we heard a field trip?
So, yes, and another question, so in, in there, it said three school employees. I think we need to take this back to policy. Because I think you should possibly include, instead of just three school employees, it should be certified and non-certified, because you're missing, if you only get three school, remember, you have an organization that reaches outside of schools. And then no one is on there.
I was talking about the description for finance committee.
For this, finance committee.
Where it's, I don't know what you're talking about.
From each school level, elementary, middle, high. So you're suggesting something different?
So it goes back, and, and you can have an individual from the school. But I do believe you need to have an individual representing, you have, like I said, you have operations, you have, you have communications, you have technology. There are other you'll want to hear.
So what are your thoughts since you're on policy? Do we, do we, could we, or do we make a motion here to send it?
We take the wording back to policy and let policy figure it out?
Well, that's what, so.
Or can we just agree on it here?
Well, to get it back into policy, to look at it.
Okay.
And it may be some more language, I'm, you know, just literally coming off the top of my head. To look at it in policy and say, are the right people on the table?
Probably the appropriate place to put it, because that's where it got decided.
What you had, that you read, can you forward that to Josie?
Yeah.
And me and Ms. Crable?
Send you the link.
So that we have it in advance, so that we know what we're talking about. And then maybe we can get it on an upcoming agenda. That's a good idea. So, anything else we wanna talk about? And get out of here a couple minutes.
So we finished our goals, so do we, do we wanna set a time to meet for the next time? Or do we want to, I don't know what your suggestion is for that, or?
Well, we got the budget workshop Monday. And then fill us in on what comes after Monday.
So after Monday, depending on what comes out of that work session, then I'll carry a recommendation to the April board meeting. And then depending on what the board might want to do, we may have another work session. Or I would just carry the proposed budget back to the board in May for approval. So we, in A, in May, I definitely will be carrying something for the board to approve because I need to get it on the agenda for the county commissioners at their main meeting.
So it would behoove us to reach out to our fellow board members and say, if you have an ask, now's the time to be making it. Let Ashley know, superintendent know, what you're, what you're planning to spring on Monday. So they can be prepared to, to talk about it.
I would say have it to by Friday or Thursday, what's better?
Thursday would be great.
If you rush that out, you'll buy a chair.
Um, I could do that. So that's good. And I think we, we maybe wait, let's, let's ride the budget process and see if we see the need. We could certainly post-budget have a field trip, but that's not gonna accomplish what we were talking about. But honestly, I don't see how we can have a field trip between now and budget. The calendar's just remarkably full.
Yes, it is.
And I take your word for it, four plumbers for forty-five schools is just absolutely shocking.
Sixty-one buildings.
Yeah, because.
It's just shocking. They, they need like medals.
Two locksmiths.
Statues in the square.
Two locksmiths.
Two locksmiths.
Two locksmiths.
Wow. I didn't think about the locksmith situation, golly.
All right, so we're just gonna let our fellow board members to get questions asked by Thursday for the upcoming meeting on Monday. And then.
Why don't you send this email out? You got the notes.
Do you need to send the email?
Yeah. Do it.
I put the policy link as well. I'm writing my notes. And so we're just basically not gonna do another meeting until after budget?
It's kinda what I'm thinking, what do you think? There's three of us.
So May is the final, kind of like, pre-budget before you submit it to the county?
Right, and then we'll probably hear back from the county normally in, in June.
So should they approve their budget beginning of June? I'm trying to remember.
Yeah, they're, they're, oh, I, I just, yeah, they, I just, I screenshotted.
I mean, June.
I screenshotted that thing, they're, they're hard on it, yeah. It, it was June.
Well, then I suppose if we.
Their public hearing is June five, they'll adopt their budget by June nineteen.
Okay.
The manager's recommendation's come May fifteen. So they're hard on it. Those meetings are just really, you learn a lot. Especially about the way every person thinks when you watch those meetings. And, and in the meantime, you know, we can have side conversations with them. And we should, actually.
Yeah. I think we are, I think we have been, in our own way. I think we have been, probably not this committee exactly.
We are. But if we were to see that in the budget process, it would go south like it did last time, then we might have to call a emergency meeting of this committee to try and solve some problems. If it, but surely, it's not gonna be like last year.
Be optimistic and not think it's gonna be the same.
Surely, it can be.
No. Especially if, if we're meeting like this and we're doing it appropriately with communication and we let people know what we need to hear, I don't see that being the same. But, I mean, it was, it was a different year. I mean, I think we were on the end of the COVID issues. And I think hopefully, we're out of that, we're out of that for the most part. I know COVID's still out there, I'm not saying it's not. I just hope, you know, as, as it affects us as a district and as a board.
But we're gonna keep in mind, they already have to shrink the budget. And if we're having ask in here, then we're gonna be at odds. There's no question, I mean, it's just fact. So.
So it's our job to talk to our fellow board members about that.
Right, and how do we, how do we, how do we have a meeting of the minds?
At some point, we're gonna have to, I guess we don't have to, but it would be nice to answer some. We've had some people who've come to us presentations for money.
Yeah.
We've had.
Right.
At some point, we need to be honest with them, say, based on all the budget needs. There we are, where we aren't, just, that's just not, unfortunately, they should, we're something to consider. Or we can, however, but we, we need to.
Well, if we get to where we're going, and Dr. Faison does this miraculous thing she's gonna do, you know, turn the schools completely around, we'll have more students. You know? So, you know.
You got, I'm looking at you, sir. I might need to call you back in the field.
For free. Volunteer.
You know what? I believe I can help you.
Oh, I'm sure you can. All right, well, we have three minutes. So do we have anything else or a motion to adjourn?
Can I say one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Just wanna remind everyone who's listening that tomorrow is principal for good day.
Yes.
So we are looking forward to that. And the schools and the students are prepared. So I think it's gonna be a breakdown.
I'm excited.
I'll be there early.
Yeah, I, I think I have the longest drive of anyone in the county.
Where do you go? Carolina Beach.
It's a pretty long drive.
I know. At that time of morning, I'm allowing an hour.
Yeah, I was just out there, though, you're gonna love it.
Nobody's going there in the morning, they all come back.
Yeah, no, I gotta get through Bradley Creek, I gotta get through college, I gotta get through Seventeenth Street.
You don't gotta tell me. I come from.
You got a tissue.
It's like, here, I'll give you a wrapper.
Just last thing, Bradford, so I'm gonna send an email out, as you suggested, for the policy discussion. I doubt you're gonna be able to handle that winter policy when it comes to what you, you think should be added.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll just say that you've got different suggestions.
Okay. Motion to adjourn? Anyone?
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
All right, we are adjourned. Good meeting, thank you.
Thanks, everyone, thank you.